St. Joseph Parish of Falmouth provides a place to worship God and refresh your spirit with others. Here are some of our upcoming events.
I'd like to call to order the Monday, November 21st, 2022, 7:00 meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. A couple of items. If you are filming or making a video or audio recording of this open session meeting, please notify me as the chair. Secondly, I would ask that you silence all cell phones. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And one quick reminder to the board that as Mr. Patterson is participating remotely, all votes need to be made through a roll call. And each time, Mr. Brown, we'll start with you to kick us off on a vote.
Okay.
Okay? That's all I have. Any recognitions this evening?
Madam Chair.
Yes?
I'd like to recognize the town staff that did an excellent job running town meeting last week. I think everything, for the most part, went very smoothly, especially the IT stuff, the new screens, the new projectors looked really good. So I think to be recognized, all the people who put in the hard work to make that go really, really well.
Thank you. Any other announcements or recognitions? Okay, I'll move on to announcements.
Madam Chair, a couple announcements. I'd like to announce that SCA, Sea Education Association, located at 171 Woods Hole Road, is offering crew training and first responder training during the month of December. If anyone is interested, it is open to the public. To email crewtraining@sca.edu. And I'd also just like to recognize that while some of us celebrate Thanksgiving on Thursday, there are some in our community who may be celebrating the National Day of Mourning on the same day.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Okay, we will open to public comment. Public comment may be made on routine matters not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself. And since the matter has not been included on the agenda, the Select Board will not participate in any discussion of your topic. It is not appropriate to use the public comment period to comment on any person's reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, disciplinary matters, or civil or criminal charges. Comments about job performance and decisions are permissible. Is there anyone here for public comment? Mr. Moriarty.
Good evening, everyone. Happy holidays. Dave Moriarty. I just want to bring a couple of updates on Mayflower Wind Project. On August 18th, 2022, I attended the Mayflower hearing at the Rhode Island Energy Facility Siding Board. The purpose of the meeting was to bury onshore cables through the town of Portsmouth, Rhode Island, and over to Brandt Point, Somerset, Massachusetts. At the meeting, it was disclosed by the spokesperson that Mayflower Wind negotiations were ongoing in Falmouth, Massachusetts, for an onshore cable route. On November 15th, 2022, the Providence Journal article stated, "Mayflower Wind says its 199-square-mile lease area could generate up to 2,400 megawatts of capacity through the power of about 1 million homes." Half of that power could be many, I'm sorry, as 149 turbines would flow into a regional power grid through a power cable routed into Falmouth, Falmouth, Massachusetts. The last update the Select Board, Mayflower Wind, had was June 8th, 2022. The Select Board is the chief executor of the policymaking body of the town of Falmouth. Hopefully, the citizens of Falmouth will get an honest update and negotiations or news from a host's community agreement between Falmouth, Mayflower Wind, and the town manager of the Select Board. The doctrine of latches, what they used the last time on the wind turbines, that's how the neighbors didn't get a chance to defend themselves. But we want to prevent that this time.
Mr. Moriarty, please speak to the board.
Yes. So it would behoove all parties, all citizens of Falmouth, which are stakeholders, all attorneys, all law firms that are involved in this project, to send a letter of understanding to the Board of Falmouth and to Mayflower that they intend to exercise all their legal rights that's allowed legally in this state and the federal courts to prevent this horrific project from ever coming to fruition. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moriarty. Any other public comment? Okay. We are a little bit ahead of ourselves, so I'm going to skip, go to the town manager report before we get to, yeah, public. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this evening, you have two hearings. They are both for the same establishment, Woods Hole, doing business as Woods Hole Cohogs Republic, sorry, not Woods Hole, Cohogs Republic Leeside Pub. This is 29 Railroad Avenue, the location previously operated as Quicks Hole Tavern. The application is for a transfer of all alcohol and entertainment license. The application has been reviewed for completeness. No concerns have been raised by staff, and I do recommend approval of that transfer. Second hearing, also for the same establishment, is to add Sunday entertainment to its existing entertainment license. Again, no concerns have been raised by staff. Under your business agenda, we have a report from Senator Susan Moran, State Senator Susan Moran. We then have a report from the Beach Committee. This is the committee's annual meeting with the Select Board, followed by a report from the Veterans Council, also its annual meeting with the Board. And then we will be taking on the next step in potentially naming the senior center following the Board's naming policy. This was, this process was initiated a year ago, and now that the year has passed, the next step is for the Board to appoint a subcommittee, or as we will discuss, potentially an individual, to seek input from the Senior Services Department and the Council on Aging, as well as to hold a public hearing on the potential naming of the senior center. Next on your agenda, we have a sign code variance application for the Sandwich Road Hatchville Fire Station at 878 Sandwich Road. The Fire Station Building Committee is represented here this evening. They have worked with the project architect to design a sign that meets public safety requirements while minimizing lighting impacts to the residents across the street. The proposed solution is to attach internally illuminated lettering to the building on the wall above the bays facing the street. The sign will be set back over 82 feet from the street. The property is in an agricultural zone, hence the variance is required. As discussed at your last meeting, the Board has not previously approved an internally lit sign in an agricultural zone. In your packet, you will find information specifying the wattage, lumens, and color temperature of the proposed sign. The sign will have a dimmable switch. The project has been bid based on this design, but a change in design could be accommodated without substantial cost implications for the town's construction. I have spoken with the Building Commissioner and Zoning Enforcement Officer since your last meeting about developing guidelines for internally lit signs. This is not a straightforward proposition, as it is difficult to understand and describe what a sign with specified dimensions, wattage, lumens, and color temperature will look like. We are attempting to identify the specifications of some existing internally lit signs to provide a comparison. Those would be for signs that are existing in the business, in Falmouth, in the business and mixed-use zones. I suggest it may not be practical to establish hardfast guidelines that could be applied to all internally lit signs, as there are many factors to consider for each application. In addition to dimensions of the sign, the distance from the road, illumination specifications, the Board may wish to consider buffering vegetation and abutting property uses. So you may be left with, you know, reviewing specific information for the sign, the specific context, and then making a judgment call for each variance application. Next on your agenda is approval of annual license renewals. All of the applications have been reviewed for completeness, and we recommend approval. On your consent agenda, there are three items under licenses that are routine and have been reviewed by staff. I recommend approval of those. Under administrative orders, I do want to say a few words about each of them. There is, on the first item, A, there is a memo in your packet explaining the request to increase the spending cap for the shellfish and aquaculture revolving account. Note that the Marine and Environmental Services Department can only spend monies received from aquaculture fees and sales, so there are no tax or budget implications associated with this request to increase the spending cap. Item B, under administrative orders, we seek the Board's approval for the Human Resources Director, Susan Lumping, to represent the town on the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group, through which the town purchases insurance, health insurance for employees, and that role had previously been filled by the prior Human Resources Director. For item C, that's a preservation restriction vote, and there is a specific motion that needs to be voted for this item, which is included in your packet. So I would request that this item be held from the, from the motion so that it can be read, from the consent agenda, so that it can be read into the record. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson-Staub. We are a few minutes early, so Senator Moran is here, so I think we'll go out of order, and we will listen to her update. Welcome, Senator Moran.
Thank you.
And we have slated you for 10 minutes.
Great. Thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity to address the Board and provide the community with an update from Beacon Hill. I want to first thank all of you for your support and collaboration since taking office. I look forward to accomplishing even more with you this session. I also want to make a point of thanking the town clerk, Michael Palma, for a very smooth running election and town meeting. Currently, residents across the state are seeing direct tax relief due to a ballot measure passed in 1986. It created a cap on state revenue. This means that taxpayers will or have already seen a refund of approximately 13% of their fiscal year 2022 state income taxes refunded directly to them. But this tax relief is just the beginning of what we need to address rising costs. I secured $85,000 for the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce to establish a program to offset the costs of childcare expressly to help women actively engaged in workforce training or educational programs get them back in the workforce or on their career paths. Secondly, a lack of affordable housing continues to be one of the biggest limitations for regional economic stability. Families are spending more on rent or mortgages, leaving less for other necessities. Employers are finding it increasingly difficult to hire, as workers cannot afford to live here. And in fact, we were just talking about how it affects public safety, including firefighting. It's been an ongoing priority of mine to identify new opportunities for housing targeted to what our region needs. As part of the fiscal year 2023 state budget, I was able to secure $100,000 for the Falmouth Housing Corporation and $350,000 to tackle the issue of affordable housing. This is on top of over $595 million invested by the state this year, including $115 million for rental housing production and $65 million to enhance homeownership opportunities. Of course, housing is only one aspect of our infrastructure needs. Through an open dialogue with you, the Board, and other public officials, I've been able to prioritize requests for funding that strengthen our public utilities and increase our community's climate resiliency, including $1.2 million in Chapter 90 funding to improve our roadways and $1 million for restoration of the seawall in Woods Hole. We're making sure that Falmouth is prepared. We were also successful in substantive increases to local aid and successfully secured a 33% increase in Chapter 70 funding for Falmouth. To further support the blue economy, a backbone of the South Shore and Cape, I fought for and secured an unprecedented investment by the state for $2 million for Woods Hole Oceanographic Institute, fundamental to job growth. This investment will allow HOE to design and construct a state-of-the-art research port and replace aging infrastructure so that it can continue to be a hub of innovation. I'm sure many of you are familiar with my office's ongoing efforts to prevent the dumping of radioactive wastewater by Holtek into Cape Cod Bay. In the pursuit of full transparency, I filed an amendment at the end of this session in Economic Development that would have established a commission to study the public health impacts of such a decision and put on hold the disposal until public hearings were held in each community impacted. Disappointingly, after being approved unanimously by the legislature and through much groundwork of the governor's office, at the end, Governor Baker vetoed this measure. Transparency has always been at the heart of the amendment, and instead of guaranteeing further oversight, the governor chose a path that will erode public confidence in the process. I want to assure all of you that I'll be meeting with the administration as soon as possible, and will aggressively pursue other avenues to guarantee maximum transparency, including passing an amendment at the beginning of the next session. Couple of important members, items for the public as well, winter energy rate increase. So in October, I joined a bipartisan group of legislators in sending a letter to the Mass DPU expressing concern about the energy rate increases slated to impact residents this winter and unfair price hikes. Lastly, I want to just mention a conversation I had earlier with Eric Turkington about the proposal of the governor's septic requirements to require 15,000 Falmouth property owners to install add-on IA systems to their current Title V septic systems at a cost of about $30,000 per installation over the next five years, and to force the town to apply for watershed permits for all 14 of the town's estuaries. That would give DEP the power to mandate millions of dollars of sewerage at a, within 20-year timetable, which is well beyond what Falmouth is currently planning to be able to afford. I appreciate the town has already laid out its objections, and we are going to further those objections in testimony before DEP between now and December 14. The problem, obviously, is Falmouth has 14 estuaries, for example, more than any other community. Other towns have one or two, Barnstable being the closest with five. So that is kind of the highlights of the update. I want to just tell you how much I appreciate being before the Board and really continuously being able to work with you, because with the speed of the requests of the legislative process, not necessarily the movement in the legislative process, we often get last-minute requests, and the more that I can have Falmouth's requests at the ready, it really makes, just the way Falmouth has always been, sort of shovel-ready, we end up having advantages in the process of getting money from the state. So I want to just thank you for the opportunity to let the community know what's up on Beacon Hill.
Thank you so much, Senator Moran. Any questions or comments from the Board?
No, I think you touched on all the important stuff.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate our conversation on housing.
Great.
Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we will jump back to our public hearings. The first public hearing is an application for the transfer of an all alcoholic beverages common victoria license and entertainment license. Leeside, Inc., doing business as Cohog Republic's Leeside Pub, located on 29 Railroad Avenue, Woods Hole. Is there anyone here for the application?
Madam Chair, I'll read the hearing. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws as amended. Leeside, Inc., doing business as Cohogs Republic, Leeside Pub, has applied for a transfer of an all alcoholic beverages common victoria license located at 29 Railroad Avenue, Woods Hole, MA. An application has also been submitted for transfer of the entertainment license. A hearing will be held in the Selectman's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, November 21st, 2022, at 7:15 PM on the above application. Per Order of Select Board publication date Friday, November 11th, 2022, Falmouth Enterprise.
Thank you. Would you introduce yourselves, please?
My name's Eric Bevins with the Cohog Republic, one of the owners.
I'm Tom Hughes with the Cohog Republic and president of Leeside, Inc.
I'm Eric Martinez with the Cohog Republic as well.
Okay. Any questions from the Board regarding this transfer of license?
Questions, I do recall, we had a correspondence from the owner, Beth Cold, saying that the restaurant didn't seem viable for her, and she was hopeful that this new arrangement would be successful in that location.
Yes, we did get that. Any other questions or comments? Any comments from the public? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those by roll call.
Brown, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Zelinski, aye.
Mr. Patterson?
Take your mic.
Did you vote, Mr. Patterson?
We can hear you.
Hello, Nancy.
Hi. Did you vote on this license?
To close the hearing?
Close.
I mean, to close the hearing?
I'm ready.
We're gonna need to take care of that. Taylor, aye. Can you vote, Mr. Patterson?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Can you vote? We have a motion to close the hearing. Can you vote on that by roll call, please? Okay, we move to close the hearing, and it is a four to, I'm not sure.
Four to zero to no vote recorded.
Okay. Any questions or conversation among the Board? Any deliberation?
I would comment that I've visited the Cohog Republic establishment, and it's always seemed to be well-run, clean, and nicely kept, so I would move approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Brown, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Zelinski, aye.
Taylor, aye. Mr. Patterson? Okay, so a four, and there's a question. Thank you very much, it's been approved.
Thank you very much, hope to see you all there.
Operation.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. Okay, we have a second, a second application, looks like they just left, for a new Sunday entertainment license. Leeside, Inc., doing business as Cohog Republic's Leeside Pub, 29 Railroad Ave., Woods Hole.
I'm gonna go.
Notice is hereby given under Chapter 140, Section 183A of the General Laws as amended by Chapter 299 of the Acts of 1926 and amendments thereto, that Leeside, Inc., doing business as Cohog Republic's Leeside Pub, has applied for a Sunday entertainment license located at 29 Railroad Ave., Woods Hole, MA. A hearing will be held in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, November 21st, 2022, at 7:15 PM on the above application. Per Order of Select Board publication date Friday, November 11th, 2022, Falmouth Enterprise.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board?
Just a question to the applicant, do you understand the parameters of the license and what's required for maintaining the peace of the neighborhood, so to speak?
Absolutely.
Yes, we do.
Absolutely.
Very good, thank you. With that, I would move approval.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for any comments from the public, and then I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Brown, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Zelinski, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Okay. Any, any conversation among the Board?
I'd move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and all those in favor?
Brown, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Zelinski, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Thank you, unanimous. Thank you, folks.
Now we're done.
Now you can go.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
You're dismissed.
See you all down there.
Okay, we will move on. Report from the Beach Committee, and we have slated you for 15 minutes.
Hang on. Get the strap, UTSC.
Am I doing something wrong?
Yeah.
It's already open, just go to the bar at the bottom.
I can't stand it. Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for giving us this time to catch you up on what we're working on with the Beach Committee. My name's Barb Schneider, and I'm the chair of the Beach Committee at this time, and I would like to very quickly introduce you to our members. I'm not going to go through all this, we have a booklet that includes this, but it's just a little bit to give you the background, the experience, and the reasons that all of us have chosen to be part of the Beach Committee, and that you've chosen us to be part of the Beach Committee as well. Two people are missing this evening due to illness, and we're glad that they're not here, and you're glad they're not here, I can assure you. We hope that they get well and can enjoy the holiday. I'd like to start a little bit with our accomplishments for the last year. We have had to reorganize three times due to leadership changes and expanded from a five to a seven-member board. Now, that takes some doing, it takes some shuffling and some getting used to, and that's what we've been going through for this past year. We have arranged an objective and independent inspection of the three buildings on town beaches, and you have seen those reports, and we have been actually using those reports through this past summer and helping the DPW with some of the things that needed to get done. We have been, become educated about the drone study that this town has had actually going on for the last couple, last year and a half, and we also have been informed on what the continuance of that would help us to have, and you'll hear more about that as we go forward. We've met with a research group to assess what the town needs to make informed decisions regarding beach sustainability in the future. That is going to be something we're focusing on, and I'm hoping that the town will be focusing on as well. We researched methods of attracting and retaining staff from all beach committees, Cape beaches, and recommended to the Select Board what would be necessary for Falmouth to hire successfully for last summer. We solicited sponsorships and donations for the awards banquet that allowed the staff to attend at almost zero cost. We began a collaborative effort with the DPW, New Bauer Architecture, and Upper Cape Tech School to have newly designed, inclusive, and safer parking attendant huts. We've improved inclusivity at most of the beaches with additional moby mats and accessible comfort stations. We've partnered with water stewards to identify beaches for water refill stations to supply clean water to beach employees and visitors, and we hope that will continue to be, have those installed. We've crafted a mission statement we'll share with you this evening, and we've monitored social media to identify issues and concern and responded when we thought necessary. And I'd now like to have Nancy and Joe come forward about the staffing.
Good evening, Select Board members. My name is Nancy Quigg, and I am a Beach Committee member. Staffing. Staffing. Just to give you an update, last summer we were short 15 lifeguards. And due to that, we many times couldn't staff all of the beaches, although with the exception of Stony and McGansey. We were able to staff with parking attendants. But many times at the end of the summer, we weren't able to, able to staff the beaches in September, unfortunately. So we have decided to actively pursue new recruits in town. We attended, Joe and I, on October 19th, the career and college day at the high school and we secured 26 signatures. It was a great day. And from that, we are going to, we've made contact with other Upper Cape high schools to attend any events that they have. Upper Cape has one in the spring. Horn doesn't, but we're going to try to recruit all positions. Parking is equally as important to maintain safety and the beach stickers, to satisfy beach stickers residents. So that was a great day that Joe and I attended and Adam, the parking, Adam Hume, the parking attendant supervisor. So. Hey, Joe?
This past summer, the Beach Committee initiated a question and answer session with the senior staff of the Beach Department to see what issues were important for the successful future of the department. Besides the importance of competitive wages and good working conditions, the major concern was the health and safety and mobility access for the parking attendants. The present parking attendant booths are inadequate and provide space, do not provide space for proper access for seating and for the access for handicap. And so we design, we, with the pro bono help of Jill Newborough Architects and the cooperative, cooperation of Jim Grady and the DPW and Nolan Leroy students at the Upper Cape Technical High School, the town has secured a promise of construction of five new parking attendant booths, beach huts, that is, this coming summer. And this is a sketch of what we're proposing to construct, of what the tech high school is going to construct. The only problem we have is to this end, we need money to do so. So the Beach Department and the committee are asking for the Select Board's approval of expenditure of up to $16,000 from the Modulo gift account to pay for these materials needed to construct these five booths. And I believe you have a request from the Beach Department to the Board separate in your, I don't know if it's in the packet tonight.
No, it is not and it will be on our agenda for December 5th to vote.
Because, so this, this construction will improve the beautification of the beaches and the safety of the individuals that are inside. They're well-designed for two persons to sit inside and wheelchair access for their future use of anybody who needs to have that. So that's basically where we're at with that particular project and hopefully you'll be able to approve the request. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the mobility plan. In May, Cape Quality Homes inspected all three bathhouses, the two at Old Silver, sorry, the two at Old Silver and the one at Surf Drive. And I can tell you that the overall condition, I believe you all received the reports, but all of them fared either fair or poor, the condition. It was a pretty comprehensive inspection. One was built in 1950 in Old Silver and the last one at Old Silver was 1978 and Surf Drive was 1956. So to maintain these buildings is, is expensive. So we looked into mobile units. There's quite a bit out there, I have to tell you. You have options to lease and purchase them. And let me show you. The one on the right, the town of New Bedford, has several of these mobile units, God bless you, that they, that they purchased. They love them so much, they're purchasing three more for next year. What's nice about them is they can be strapped down for minor storms, but they can be taken up quite easily and reassembled in a minimal amount of time, up to one or two hours. They are all handicapped accessible. Any of the companies that I talked to all have handicapped accessibility as well. So they also, so these, the relocation of the Beach Department offices and relocatable modular offices is something that we'd like to see in the future as well and would recommend to the town for Surf Drive. Food trucks can replace onsite kitchens, those are very difficult to maintain and very expensive to clean and they're also a hazard. And we recommend this for capital planning in the next five years. Okay, thank you.
This is, this is Heather Burke talking. She, so I just went 20 years younger and I'm going to try and go through this with you about the communication plan. This is why we communicate. We tried to make, think of all the reasons that we think it's important for Beach Department and Beach Committee to be communicating internally and with the public. And as you can see, communication has got a lot of different possibilities and needs. Right now, we're doing some text and some emails and we have the town website and we do have a number of people, I believe there's over 1,000 people that are currently getting those warnings that the beaches are closed or whatever and things like that. But we're hoping that we'll not only keep those three things, but we will get much more into the 21st century with social media. We, many of us happen to be watching social media, take part in social media ourselves and we know how much discussion is going on, on our, on those sites. We know that there's a Facebook page that's just been started for the Beach Department. We'd like to be talking about the possibility of a Beach Committee one as well because the Beach Department one is extremely rigid in what it can and can't do and we think that there's a lot of need for more discussion and more stopping rumors that are being seen on social media. We also wanted to just show you this, these are some examples of some of the Facebook pages that are out there right now with some of the other towns. And of course, these are constantly in flux and changing and giving all kinds of information and they're taking time for people to keep up with it, but people are doing that. So here we are with what we think has been going on and where we hope we could be going with a lot more input, a lot more communicating with the public and helping the public to see some of the reasoning behind some of the things happening at the beaches as we change what we're doing.
Just wanna make sure I know how to move this. Okay, got it. Okay. Good evening, Chair Taylor and members of the Select Board. My name is Lynn Shad and it's a pleasure to be here. I thank you for the opportunity. We thank you for the opportunity. My colleague, Mark Twitchell, is one of the members that was not able to be here this evening. However, we are very excited to introduce to you the Beach Committee's first-ever Subcommittee on Sustainability and Coastal Resiliency. Thanks to your foresight, also with the leadership of our Chairwoman, Barbara Schneider, this Subcommittee is tasked to advise you on the best practices and actions to protect and preserve our beaches from sea level rise and beach erosion. As we all know, our beaches and coastal waters are the lifeblood of the economic vitality of our town. To that end, the Beach Committee partnered this year with various experts and we'd like to extend our gratitude to the staff of the Conservation Commission, Sustainable Coastal Solutions and the Woods Hole Group for their expert collaborations with the town. Falmouth's chief engineer and leadership and staff of the Department of Public Works have also been instrumental in progressing the important work of beach restoration and mitigation. Some of these collaborations have resulted, as you know, in the Minot Beach and Bridge Project, as well as plans to reinforce the seawall at Chappie Beach. And future projects that have been suggested is work at Woodsneck Beach, Surf Drive to Mill Street and West Falmouth Harbor. Another collaborator that we worked with is GPI Drone Imagery and they've provided us with four flyovers of our beaches. Thanks to you, our Select Board, for your financial support of this important work. A multiple series of these flyovers are needed to establish possible patterns of erosion to help us, you, make meaningful decisions regarding beach mitigation. Now, beach mitigation is a heavy lift and requires substantive funding. To that end, our Subcommittee has identified several state and federal grant programs that may be able to help with this. For instance, coastal zone management grants, municipal vulnerability grants and FEMA grants for which Falmouth may be eligible. There's more to follow. As we look forward to future collaborations with these groups, as well as, we will also turn to the wealth of resources available to us right here in our own backyard. You may know that Resilient Woods Hole was recently awarded state funding from the Office of Coastal Management to study dune restoration at Stony Beach. That gives us ideas.
Ms. Shad, I'm just gonna let you know you are at your time already.
Okay, just gonna finish up to say.
You could just wrap it up, that would be great.
We look forward to continuing to work, work with the Select Board on sustainability practices going forward and let's make our beaches poster childs for sustainable living. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can we ask you for three minutes? Because we have a mission statement to present to you and the concluding remarks.
That's up to the board. Will you give an additional two minutes?
I would be willing.
Go ahead.
I don't know what's happened to this. Is that in your book, the mission statement?
The Beach Committee mission statement?
Yeah.
Yes. We, we looked everywhere for a mission statement, there was none to be had. Anywhere, in anyone's, so we decided it was important to create one. We would ask you, as a Select Board, at a future meeting, to look at our mission statement that we have worked hard on and to approve it so that we can know that we actually have a mission statement. And I think if you look at the bullets that we've included with the different things, I think you'll find that it was in, it's in line with what you're expecting. And I'd just like to have Joe give a few closing remarks.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'll be brief as I can. As you've seen from the presentation, the Falmouth Beach Department responsibilities are no longer a part-time summer job. The Beach Committee recommends investigating how to transition this department, the Beach Department, into a year-round administrative and clerical functions. We would recommend that this department, the Beach Department, has functioned more than just the summertime, but 12 months a year, not just hours during the off-season. So we are recommending that they be considered as far as encouraging their growth into a department that can function year-round. We've always realized that the only thing that we can lose in our present situation is our coastline and our coastline is very valuable to Falmouth. The Beach Committee recommends immediate action to stop the erosion of Falmouth beaches wherever possible. As a committee, we're researching different methods and how to accomplish this, but we need to act now. The Falmouth beaches define Falmouth. The beaches are not just for pleasure and recreation, they're for our economy and our future. Property values, business viability, public and private employment, economic development in marine industries and transportation, all depend on the vital resilience of our coastline. We can no longer let nature take its course and lose our beaches to time and neglect. We recommend the Select Board take all possible actions now to save our beaches and we will, as a committee, will continue to find ways to recommend those techniques and we thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Beach Committee. Any comments from the board?
I would just make one as a liaison to the committee. I appreciate the committee's hard work and certainly recognize the significance of their recommendation to consider year-round status for the Beach Department. It's unfortunate, though, that we've been traditionally, it's been traditionally a summer job and the staff that we've hired is really only available in summer. So I'm hoping that maybe there could be some sort of collaboration between the new Sustainability Director, maybe DPW staff to kind of carry these initiatives forward during the off-season, that way we're not faced with losing our staff members that are currently managing the department. So I'm hoping we can get creative to, I think there is a year-round need, but I hate to lose the people that we have just because of the seasonal lack of availability for, you know, year-round staffing.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any other comments from the board?
If you don't mind, Madam Chair.
Mr. Johnson, stop.
Yes, thank you. So I just wanted to follow up on Member Brown's comments and, you know, I want to say I have, I support where the committee's coming from. I do see a need for increased year-round support and I agree that there are a number of different ways that we can get there through support from other departments, potential reorganization, potential change in positions. So that's an issue that I certainly am interested in working on and I would just add that I have a lot of confidence in the staff. The Assistant Superintendent and Superintendent of Beaches, I think, have done a very fine job and I have a lot of confidence in them and I would not want anyone to take this discussion as a reflection on the work that they've done. Agreed.
And I think it is important to look at ideas that the Beach Committee may have regarding some kind of reorganization, but we'll, we'll leave that up to you in the Beach Committee. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Report from the Veterans Council Committee. We've slated you for 15 minutes as well.
I don't know how to take that down. Sorry. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'm Carissa April. I'm the Chair of the Veteran Council Committee and this is our annual report, as you know, and I believe this is covering from June to June. So some of the, you know, it's not recent, some of my report, but over for the last year. And I am gonna take a few notes from the Beach Committee. I noticed they had very nice attire with their logos and so I think, and they also had a team, so I'd like to bring that next year. You can look for hopefully a team and some really nice attire and maybe some slides. But for tonight, I just have a few updates for you. I think that things went as, mostly as traditionally have gone in previous years. We had a return to public events and outside events. We met in person and we met monthly, except for the typical summer recess that the committee takes in the summer months. We had the two annual public veteran observances ceremonies on the library lawn, as we do each year, the Veterans Day Ceremony and the Memorial Day Ceremony. We are always looking for recommendations for keynote speakers. We're interested in people that other people come across, meet or hear and think might make compelling, interesting speakers for those events. So if anybody has ideas about that, we'd love to get that via email or word of mouth.
Can I just add that your speaker this year at Veterans Day was amazing?
Thank you.
Absolutely amazing. Really, really well done. Probably my favorite thus far.
Great. That's very, very nice to hear. Thanks. During the year, as we always do, we support the events of the other member organizations' activities, the Wounded Warrior Ride, for example, something that the whole committee, all of the member organizations kind of pitch in and help, AmVets Open House, the chicken dinners and things like that. And then the committee's annual holiday event is probably our largest, most visible event, and that is collecting items, packaging, and delivering holiday gift bags to Falmouth veterans who are in nursing homes, who are residents of nursing homes in the area. And last year, last holiday season, we delivered 134 holiday bags, and they were loaded with all kinds of goodies for winter, to seven facilities. So we'll be doing that again this year, but that's the number that we did last year. We entertained presentations from Elder Services of Cape Cod and the Oak Grove Cemetery about their respective initiatives and ways that we can collaborate with them in the future. And this spring, we, like the Beach Committee, started looking at developing a mission statement, a vision statement, some kind of also doctrine or procedures, so that we could kind of know what we're there to do. And we also look forward to sharing that with you and sort of running that past you and making sure that aligns with what the Select Board has in mind for this committee to be doing. We also couldn't find much of anything anywhere to define that, so we think it's pretty straightforward. We don't think it'll be difficult, and we should have that soon to show you. And then with regard to organization, I am, I was the new chair, elected in November a year ago, which was toward the, I guess, the middle of the period that we're reporting on. We had one new at-large member that joined during that period, and that's retired Lieutenant Colonel Paula Smith, whose daughter was the fabulous speaker at Veterans Day this year. And then, this is outside this period of report, but I think it's of note. We currently have three vacant seats on the committee. The VFW, DAV, and Falmouth Military Support Group all have, those are appointed, those are regular held seats by those organizations, and all of those are vacant currently. They have not, we don't have representatives in place for those. So, as I said, that's outside the report timeframe, but that's one of our current state situations. Any questions for us?
Questions from the Board? Comments from the Board?
I was going to make this part of my committee report, but I'd like to thank you for the hospitality of town meeting, pre-town meeting, when we got to get in there and speak to you all and see what the future plans were. I really, for one, appreciated that, and want to thank you publicly for it.
Yeah, so the, Joe Q. Veteran Coffee Break is a member of the Veterans Council Committee and hosted the, and you were all there, which was terrific. It was, we felt very well supported, having everybody come through prior to town meeting, where we were inviting town meeting members to just come and see where, you know, how far we'd come in, about a year or so since we started the lease with the town. So, I appreciate that. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate that support.
Any comments, questions from the Board?
I just appreciate your work, and thanks for coming and giving us this report.
Thanks.
Thank you, Carissa. Okay. Number four, on our business agenda, I am going to recuse myself from this conversation and turn the gavel over to Ms. Scott Brown.
Scott Price.
Scott Brown.
I get the gavel, but I don't think I get to do anything with it yet.
Give it to her.
Mr. Johnson-Staub, I'll let you start off this one.
Sure. So, the, this is a step in the process, as I mentioned in my preliminary report. The naming process, and for the public, again, just to be clear, we're talking about naming the senior center. We received an application a year ago to name the senior center after John V. Muniyani. I believe he was a former senior center director. And the, under the Board's naming, naming policy, the next step is to appoint two members to take public input, to meet with the senior center director, meet with the Council on Aging, and to hold a public hearing, and then bring a recommendation back to the Select Board to name the senior center, or not name the senior center, for Mr. Muniyani. And I've mentioned that this, you know, the policy's been around for a while, and interpretation received just within the last few years has made it clear that any Subcommittee of an appointed or elected Board is subject to the open meeting law. So if you, if you wish to appoint two people, just know that they can't communicate other than to post a public meeting, take minutes, and, you know, if they want to meet with the senior center director, that would have to be at a posted public meeting. If they want to take any other public input or communicate with one another, that would have to be at a posted public meeting. So, you know, it's viable. You can continue that way if you wish, or you may want to just name one member of the Select Board to undertake that public input role and then report back to the Select Board. Your discretion.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question about that? So, you know, this has been in the past, the traditional way we've done it, and it was, at the time, thought that a two-member committee was not subject to open meeting law. Has the rule changed, or have we just become more aware of what the rule really is?
I think it, I think it may have been within the last, at least, it's been at least five years, probably closer to 10 years, that the Attorney General came forward with a clear interpretation on this. So, I know in the, at the time, when I was in Yarmouth, we too had operated based on a quorum, and we thought that a Subcommittee of less than a quorum could meet without posting its meetings. It's now clear in writing from the Attorney General that is not the way they interpret the open meeting.
I'd like to get a copy of that, though, if you wouldn't mind.
Thank you. Should we slide the mics down so there's an extra mic? Because Scott's not really, oh, you have it out.
I just said I'd like to get a copy of that.
Sure. It's in the open meeting law, I, that the Attorney General provisioned.
So, what do we think? Do we want to continue with two and follow the open meeting law?
Have we changed the policy to have one person do it?
You can. It's your policy, so if you're comfortable changing the policy, you can, you can do that and move forward based on the one person tonight. We can also follow up and put it, put the policy on the agenda for a formal provision.
And that's, to be clear, changing the policy to have one person?
Correct.
Appointed? Okay.
Or at least to consider it.
At least consider it. Is anyone interested in being on this committee?
Someone, someone will have to do it.
Someone will have to do it, but before we nominate anyone, is anyone particularly Mr. Patterson, are you particularly interested? No? Okay. Would anyone like to nominate someone? Or themselves?
I'll do it.
We have a motion for Mr. Zalinski to be the, to be the committee member. Do you have a second?
I would second that.
Okay. All those in favor, by roll call?
Brown, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Zalinski, aye.
Mr. Patterson? Okay, I'm going to say that he's not there, so we'll have three a's.
Three a's.
And one N's.
Does it, yeah.
That does it.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. We can bring Nancy Breckin?
Thank you. Number five. Oh, you're giving me the-
I'm giving you that back.
And the gavel back. Okay, number five, request for a variance to sign code 18426 Illumination Context Architecture signage for the Sandwich Road Fire Station, 878 Sandwich Road, East Falmouth, Mass.
Hi, good evening. Lloyd Demow, a member of the Fire Station Building Committee, along with one of our coaches, Chris Simler. We're here tonight on behalf of Context Architecture. Ellen Light, who's been at one of some of your meetings, couldn't be here tonight. She's actually working on some addendums to the-
Lloyd, can you speak up a little bit?
Yeah, that would be great.
People don't say that often to me, Scott. Thank you. So I'm here tonight, we're here tonight because Context Architecture, Ellen Light, is working on some addendums to the Electrical Engineering sub-p packages on the station. The Electrical Engineer isn't working on Thursday after the holiday, so there's a little bit of a crunch to keep that moving. As you know, we've had an aggressive schedule with this building, and we want to keep it moving forward. And the town's project, oh, Project Manager, Veritex, Steve Kirby, had a conflict this evening, so you got Chris and I. Up on the screen, they sent some drawings, and there was some concerns expressed at the last meeting. The sign location on the building is going to be about 82 feet and a few inches back from the front of the property line. As you know, we set the station back a little bit to allow sightlines for the apparatus leaving and going, so we've moved back on the property, and that, we feel, is also beneficial to the sign not being overpowering on the building. Initially, the Building Committee, along with the Fire Chief and the Internal Staff, discussed lighting on this, around the property, understand the rest of the property's going to have dark-skY compliant lighting on the property as required. We looked at some lighting on the sign about either downlighting the sign or uplighting the sign or lighting it from the sides, and then we got around to the backlighting. And the backlighting actually gives it a little softer touch, and it isn't as overpowering. The committee and the Fire Station, as well as the Select Board, and we know we all want to be good neighbors to the residents out there, we're kind of landing in the middle of their neighborhood, and we don't want to disrupt them. And this is one way of making the station sign visible, yet not overpowering, so it's not, you know, dimming the lights in the, in the house next door. So, it's 82, like I said, 82 feet, seven inches back from the property line. Bear with me for a second. This is a closer view of the front of the station, the Hatchet Hill Station. This sign spans 30 feet. The front of that fire station with over the apparatus doors is about 63 feet. 1.1% of the apparatus bay elevation will be backlit by the signage, and the letters alone will only cast 17.3 square feet of light around the edges. There, that's a 30-foot sign with 24-inch lettering. It's a stainless steel sign that lights it. Some of the other things, approximate wattage on the sign is somewhere between 350 to 400 watts. That's 13,000-plus lumen. The LED color temperature is 4,000 K, typical of an exterior sign lighting. And the LED light, as Mr. Johnson-Staub mentioned earlier, is dimmable through the building's automatic lighting control. The sign will be activated to the on position with a photocell and shut off on a timer schedule that will coincide with daylight. But, you know, we said we want the station to be visible. It's in a new area, it's in a residential area, and if someone's looking for the station, we want them to be able to find it. Driving into the meeting tonight, you go by Headquarters, and there's no light on the sign in the front of the building. I mean, that's Fire Station on Main Street, but it's an example, the sign's not lit at all. And one of the things that the, we talked about is, fire stations are still a safe haven drop-off for young children, and, you know, should someone be in crisis and need to drop, do that. We want to be able to find a station, so, but we're out there trying to be compliant to the, and considerate of the neighbors, so.
Any questions from the Board?
My first impression is that the 400, 4,000 watt, I mean, 400 watts seems like a lot.
4,000 K?
Yeah, 4,000 K. In houses, we use 2,700 to 3,000, and sometimes people think that's too much.
So, I was, I was kind of curious about that myself, too. And so today, I did a little research before coming here, and I pulled up this color chart. So the 4,000 K is pretty much, if you can see there, is in a, is a neutral zone of lighting as far as lumens are concerned. Where lum-
Yes, please.
I just want to make sure it's, there's color temperature and there's wattage. I just want to make sure that we're not miscommunicating. So this is color temperature.
The 4,000 is color temperature. The 4,000 watt, the 400 to 300 watt isn't quite a lot when it comes to a sign. We're talking about a very small sign, light-wise. It's, and it's not concentrated in one spot, it's spread out over the distance of the sign, so it's not like beaming out in one-
That's the total wattage for the whole sign.
Right.
The backdrop is brick, right?
No, actually, the backdrop of that is going to be a clapboard base.
What color?
We're thinking gray. We, we've tossed a couple colors around. It's a gray base. It looks, I don't have a picture of it with color on it, unfortunately, but we're looking at some red doors with the gray background and this lighting above it, the stainless steel, it, I think it looks pretty sharp. And I, I think this is the best way to keep the light down in the neighborhood, except at the same time, identify that we're there for you.
I think having a dimmer makes it more plausible. If there was an issue, just dim it, right?
Did I read that the dimmer-
I think that's a very big deal.
It's not really dimmable, though, is it?
I can't speak to the, they say it's dimmable. I, I'd be misleading you if I could speak to the dimmability of it, so, but I could certainly research that and get back to you on that.
I said, with this one or the other application?
No, that was the-
There is a dimmer switch. It is dimmable.
Yes.
This one is, right. I think the issue, but the, the sign that was being discussed for the Cape Cod Church is also dimmable. The only distinction that we might make there is, this is a town facility which we can control, right? So with another facility, if there's a dimmable switch, you know, unless part of the decision says what the setting has to be on that dimmable switch, you know, I would expect the church, I'm sure if we asked them to dim it, they probably would. I'm just, but there could be a distinction made that we don't control private entities and how they use the dimmer switch. In this case, it's ours.
Okay.
And I, this is public safety.
Right.
Right? So that's, I had some of the same thoughts as I was reading through the application and what this looked like, and thinking about Cape Cod Church. But for me, what tipped me over the edge on this was, this is a fire department, this is public safety. So to me, that's a different ballpark than, than, say, a church or a private organization.
It's still something new in the neighborhood, and there are people across the street, so I'm just trying to be as careful as possible.
Absolutely. And if we got complaints, we certainly would ask them to dim it, because, like Mr. Johnson-Staub said, we do have control.
Right.
Absolutely. You know, and throughout this whole process, we've been conscious of the headlights for the trucks coming out, and that's why we're returning in the back, and other things. We don't want to be disruptive to the neighborhood. It's a, obviously, as we all know, it's something that's been needed for a long time in that area of town, and we want to fit in when we move out there, so that's why we're asking for the backlit sign.
I would say, as a resident near a fire station, I really, the only thing that wakes me up is the backup beeping. You know, when they leave, they're real quiet, and even when they come back, they're quiet. But that's that little beep, beep, and you won't have that.
Glad to hear we're quiet leaving, because that doesn't happen often. But the backup, unfortunately, that's a necess-
It's an ocean-
Necessary evil, it's an ocean thing.
Yeah, I know. But that's what I'm saying, there's an advantage here, so there's going to be less disturbance to the neighbors, because they're going to drive right around and drive in, right?
Any other questions or comments?
Just that I would add that the, you know, the alternative is exterior lighting, which may not be any less impactful on the neighborhood. But that is by rights. So a variance is required for internally lit, not required for externally lit.
I actually think external would be more-
I think so, too.
Intrusive than, than an internal. Exactly.
Yeah.
The dimmer system, too, I mean, you could go to the other side of the spectrum, and in clement weather, you could turn it up as well.
Right.
So, I mean, that variable works both ways.
Mm-hmm.
With respect to public safety.
Right.
So, do I have any motion?
I would move approval as presented.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Brown, aye. Oh, I was still roll call? Brown, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Zalinski, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Okay, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And also, another note, the bid package is out, and we're waiting to get that back mid-December, I believe, so we'll be working and moving forward on that. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Boyd.
Okay, we'll keep moving. Approve annual license renewals. I'm going to read through these, and if anyone wants to hold them, to ask, hold one, to ask a question, please notify the Chair.
I'm happy to tell if you want to.
I will be going to. All alcohol restaurant license and common victoria license, 99 Restaurant, 30 David Straits, Anchor Ale House, 100 David Straits, Anejo Mexican Bistro, 188 Main Street, Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, 7 Nathan Ellis Highway, Sea Salt, 75 David Straits, Captain Kidd Restaurant, 77 Water Street, Chapacoy Grill, 410 West Falmouth Highway, DJ's Family Sports Pub, 872 Main Street, Falmouth Country Club, 360 Carriage Shop Road, Falmouth Jade, 143 to 145 East Falmouth Highway, Osteria La Savetta, 133 Main Street, Papa Jake's, 146 Sandwich Road, Paul Harney Golf Enterprises, Inc., 74 Club Valley Drive, Paul's Pizza, 37 Elaine Ave, Quarter Deck Restaurant, 164 Main Street, Quicks Hold Tavern, 29 Railroad Ave, Sacanese Golf Club, 132 Falmouth Woods Road, Shipwreck, 263 Grand Ave, Simply Divine Pizza, 271 Main Street, Sweet Rice, 160 70 Ticket Highway, The Conference Table, 205 Worcester-
I'm going to read through these and if anyone wants to hold them to ask a, hold one, to ask a question, please notify the chair.
I'm happy to tell if you want to.
I will be going to. All alcohol restaurant license and common victorial license. Ninety-nine Restaurant, thirty Davis Straits. Anchor Ale House, a hundred David Straits. Anejo Mexican Bistro, one eighty-eight Main Street. Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, seven Nathan Ellis Highway. Sea Salt, seventy-five Davis Straits. Captain Kidd Restaurant, seventy-seven Water Street. Chappaqua Grill, four-ten West Falmouth Highway. DJ's Family Sports Pub, eight-seventy-two Main Street. Falmouth Country Club, three-sixty Carriage Shop Road. Falmouth Jade, one forty-three to one forty-five East Falmouth Highway. Asteria La Savetta, one thirty-three Main Street. Papa Jake's, one forty-six Sandwich Road. Paul Harney Golf Enterprises, Inc., seventy-four Club Valley Drive. Paul's Pizza, seven, thirty-seven Elaine Ave. Quarter Deck Restaurant, one sixty-four Main Street. Quicks Hold Tavern, twenty-nine Railroad Ave. Sacanestic Golf Club, one thirty-two Falmouth Woods Ro- Shipwreck, two sixty-three Grand Ave. Simply Divine Pizza, two seventy-one Main Street. Sweet Rice, one sixty, Seventy Ticket Highway. The Conference Table, two-oh-five Worcester Court. The Glass Onion, thirty-seven Main Street, North Main Street. The Golden Swan, three-twenty-three to three-twenty-five Main Street.
All Alcohol Inholder License and Inholder License, Coonamessett Inn, three-eleven Gifford Street. All Alcohol Club License, Midway Trap and Skeet, two-eighty-four Old Meeting House Road. Woods Hole Golf Club, one-thirty Quissette Ave. All Alcohol Club License and Common Victoire License, Falmouth Yacht Club, two-ninety Clinton Ave. Woods Hole Golf Club, one-thirty Quissette Ave. All Alcohol Package Store, Falmouth Wine and Spirits, three-twenty-two Palmer Ave. Family Foods, three-fifty East Falmouth Highway. Cappy's Twenty-One Springs Bar, Spring Bars Road. North Falmouth Liquors, three-sixty-two North Falmouth Highway. Tea Ticket Market, one-twenty-five Tea Ticket Highway. West Falmouth Market, six-twenty-three West Falmouth Highway. Wine and Malt Restaurant License and Common Victoire License, Country Fair, three-nineteen Main Street. Crab Apples, five-fifty-three Palmer Ave. Seafood Sam's, three-fifty-six Palmer Ave. Wine, Malt and Coral Restaurant License and Common Victoire License, Dogs and Hogs, seven-eighty-one Main Street.
Winery Brewery, Aquatic Brewing, six-sixty-one Main Street. Bad Martha's, eight-seventy-six East Falmouth Highway. Cape Cod Winery, four Oxbow Road. Wine and Malt Package Store, Holly Park Variety, five-eighty-A, Route twenty-eight-A, Integress. Six-oh-seven Main Street. Ocean State Job Lot, fifty Tea Ticket Highway. Rapid Refill, four-thirty-five Palmer Ave. Wild Harbor General Store, one-eighty-eight, two-hundred Old Main Road. Windfall Market, seventy-seven Scranton Ave. Common Victoire License, Bad Martha's, eight-seventy-six East Falmouth Highway. Betsy's Diner, four-fifty-seven Main Street. Burger King, one-eleven Tea Ticket Highway. Cape Cod Winery, four Oxbow Road. Coonamessett Farm, two-seven-seven Hatchville Road. DeAngelo's, six-eighty-nine Main Street. Mary Ellen's Portuguese Bakery, eight-twenty-nine Main Street. McDonald's, two-sixty-three Tea Ticket Highway. Papa Gino's, fifty-six Davis Straits. Percy's Place, forty North Main Street. Starbucks, eleven Davis Straits. Talk of the Town Diner, five-eight-seven Quaker Road.
Entertainment, Anchor Ale House, one hundred Davis Straits. Bad Martha's, eight-seventy-six East Falmouth Highway. Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, seven Nathan Ellis Highway. Cape Cod Winery, four Oxbow Road. Captain Kidd Restaurant, seventy-seven Water Street. Coonamessett Farm, two-seventy-seven Hatchville Road. Coonamessett Inn, three-eleven Gifford Street. Falmouth Yacht Club, two-ninety Clinton Ave. Papa Jake's, one-forty-six Sandwich Road. Quarter Deck Restaurant, one-sixty-four Main Street. Quicks Hold Tavern, twenty-nine Railroad Ave. Sacanestic Golf Club, one-thirty-two Falmouth Woods Road. Simply Divine Pizza, two-seventy-one Main Street. Tony Andrews Farm, three-ninety-four Old Meeting House Road. Woods Hole Golf Club, one-thirty Quissette Ave. Sunday Entertainment License, Bad Martha's, eight-seventy-six East Falmouth Highway. Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, seven Nathan Ellis Highway. Coonamessett Farm, two-seventy-seven Hatchville Road. Coonamessett Inn, three-eleven Gifford Street. Falmouth Yacht Club, two-ninety Clinton Ave. Quicks Hold Tavern, twenty-nine Railroad Ave. Sacanestic Golf Club, one-thirty-two Falmouth Woods Road. Tony Andrews Farm, three-ninety-four Old Meeting House Road. Automatic Amusement License, DJ's Family Sports Pub, eight-seventy-two Main Street.
Go ahead.
Used Car Dealer License, classes one, two, and three. Braga Auto Sales, two-twenty-seven R Main Street. Capstone Yachts, fifty-six Scranton Ave. Costa's Autobody Company, two-twenty-two Carriage Shop Road. Falmouth Auto Works, one-fifty-one Worcester Court. Falmouth Pier, thirty-seven, sixty-four Scranton Ave. Falmouth Salvage, nine Haywood Road. Frank's Auto Sales, four-forty-two R to four-forty-four East Falmouth Highway. Rain Trucking, nine Hayway Road. Sandy's Auto Sales, forty-five Simpson Lane. Seven Haydom, five-sixty-one Thomas Landers Road. Tea Ticket Autobody, one-oh-eight Trotting Park Road. Fortune Teller, the Holistic Swan, six-twenty-eight West Falmouth Highway.
Okay, we will, do we need a vote on those? I think we do.
Yes, we do, yes.
Okay, so we've read them all. Do, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to, and a second. All those in favor?
Brown, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Zelinski, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Okay, unanimous. Discuss and vote the 2023 Select Board Meeting Calendar.
Madam Chair, there is one omission from the calendar, which is the Saturday, January seventh workshop meeting.
Yes, that is in my notes, thank you. Um, and if people would just take a quick look at that, the, my only request will be that Monday, January twenty-third, we have two meetings booked for January and I'd like to keep that as a backup if needed and delete it on the twenty-third of January if we do not need it. And then on the eighteenth of February, it says Select Board Meeting Workshop. And that should not be on there.
Unless we decide to add it back in.
Unless we need another one, but we, I, I think that may have been a carryover.
I believe it was.
From, from last year's calendar, so that can come off. And then in, if you look in September, we have, actually go back to August twenty-sixth. We have a strategic planning session with a question. We may change those dates, but I did want some placeholders in for strategic planning for next year.
What date did you say? Oh, the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, uh, it says August twenty-sixth and there were all question marks because we can move those around, but we did want placeholders. And that is assuming that we will be doing strategic planning the same way we did it this year.
Madam Chair, we, we may want to consider making those earlier in the year, looking at the spring, June, July.
Okay, we can look at that.
It fits better with fiscal year planning. With this year, we were late to arriving at the concept of doing more than one meeting and we had other things that pushed it later in the calendar.
Okay, so we can take that under advisement and you can propose some dates at some point. So do I have a motion to accept the calendar as is with all board members knowing that there may be some changes regarding any Saturday meetings and certainly any meetings around strategic planning?
Summed.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Brown, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Zelinski, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Patterson, Patterson, aye.
Unanimous. Okay, I'm going to go through the consent agenda and I'm just going to remind the board that we have been asked to hold on administrative orders C. And I do have the motion at some point, so if the board moves that way, we will move on the motion. I will read the consent agenda. If you want me to hold any other items, please notify me. Okay. Licenses approved, request to extend seasonal all-alcoholic common victorial license until January second, twenty-twenty-three for the Landfall Restaurant, nine Luscombe Ave and Woods Hole. Approve application for a two-special one-day liquor license. Falmouth Theater Guild located on fifty-eight Highfield Drive in Falmouth, December second and December third and December ninth and December tenth, twenty-twenty-two, six-thirty to ten P.M. All Friday licenses are requested for six-thirty P.M. to nine-thirty P.M. And Saturday licenses are requested for three P.M. to six P.M. Approve the application for a lease, uh, release of pledge of license. West Falmouth Market located at six-twenty-three West Falmouth Highway, Falmouth. Authorize increased spending limit for shellfish and aquaculture revolving account to one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Vote to appoint Susan Lumping as the Town of Falmouth representative to the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group.
Madam Chair, I would move approval of all consent agenda items except two C.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Brown, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Zelinski, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Thank you. Okay, now let's take a look at two C. Vote to approve request from three-hundred Committee for a conservation restriction for the Eil Brown, the Ed Brown Ledger, three-point-seven-two acre property at zero Boxberry Hill Road. Questions on that? We have the motion.
Would you like me to read it?
Sure, do, go right ahead. Yep.
Motion that the Select Board approve a conservation restriction from Edward J. Brown Ledger, grantor, to the three-hundred Committee Land Trust Incorporated, grantee over approximately three-point-seven acres of land located at zero Boxberry Hill Road in East Falmouth. Property ID ten-oh-three-zero-one-zero-zero-two for conservation purposes. Approval guarantee, approval granted shall allow for non-substantive changes, meaning without significant impact to the terms of the conservation restriction based on final review by the State Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Brown, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Zelinski abstained.
Taylor, aye.
Patterson, aye.
So we have four yeas and one abstention. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to the minutes. Review and vote to approve minutes of meetings. Public session, October third, twenty-twenty-two, and executive session, November seventh, twenty-twenty-two.
Madam Chair, I have one very small edit to the minutes. On page two of the minutes, under Business, the second paragraph, halfway down, it says the Wood Hole Oceanographic Institute. It should be Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution. Very small edit.
Okay.
You know, at the end of that conversation with the lady from Hui, I asked about permitting and I said, look, speaking of streamlining permitting, I wonder if you would like to partner with us in seeking, uh, streamlining coastal projects, like perhaps considering removal of, uh, Army Corps of Engineers from coastal projects because they seem to be not able to keep up with schedule. I don't know if that's something that the board wants to see included in the minutes because the lady that I spoke with from Hui seemed interested in that collaboration and it was something that took place. I don't know if you feel like it's relevant or important to be added.
If, so you said it in the minutes? You said it allowed to-
Well, it's not in the minutes now.
Right, but you said it-
I'm just wondering if the board would like to see that reflected, if there's any interest in the future collaboration on those matters.
I don't think we can take them out, can we?
So I, I believe Mr. Brown is saying that he said it at the meeting, so it could be included in the minutes.
Right.
Oh.
And I'm jumping from that to saying, I'm not sure that we can-
That we can add it.
Why isn't it in, if he said it, why isn't it in the minutes?
Well, the minutes are not a transcript.
Right.
And it's not really generally relevant to their report.
But could we add that afterwards? I don't-
That's a fair question.
So can we, I guess the question is, can we ask Jennifer to go back and review and add that in?
That would probably be the way to pursue it.
And then approve.
Yeah, yeah.
And not that it's a big deal, but just, I mean, something I eventually would like to pursue.
Right, but it's something that you said. Um, and I had a question on, when we solicited three, we talked about getting three quotes and it was under its page three of five Town Manager Hiring Process. Mr. Brown, did you vote for, I thought you voted against that.
I did, I voted against hiring consultant.
Okay, but not the RFQs.
Ultimately, I voted yes to the RFQ.
Okay.
Because the board had already voted to move forward the process.
Gotcha.
I voted against the process, but once we agreed to move forward that, I did vote positively on the second vote.
Okay, thank you, that, I was confused about that, so thank you for, for clarifying. Okay, and with those, they can come back and we'll approve them. Anything on the executive session notes for November seventh?
I hope those were fun.
Is the noise be released?
Uh, very good question. Let me take a look. Thank you. Oh, that's terrible. I, I don't have mine either.
Yeah, I would, I would not advise releasing these.
Okay, so we can vote to approve them and not release. So do I have a motion?
Summed.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the executive session minutes of November seventh, twenty-twenty-two, not for release.
Brown, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Zelinski, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Okay, thank you. Town Manager Supplemental Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple issues I want to report out on this evening. The first is an update on the status of the use of opioid abatement funds. The board will recall these are funds that the town has begun to receive as a result of class action lawsuits that the town and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts have participated in. The amount of funding to be received is still very much a moving target. But the Human Services Director, Susie Hauptman, has been working with the Commission on Substance Use and the Human Services Committee to develop a plan for allocating the funds the town has begun receiving. They have received guidance from state and regional professionals on best practices. The objectives that they are pursuing are to identify the most impactful uses of these funds by seeking input from individuals and communities directly impacted by substance use disorders. We are considering a working group appointed by the Town Manager, which would include-
Thank you.
Sorry.
Sorry.
That's okay, which would include the Human Services Director, one member of the Human Services Committee, one member of the Committee, Commission on Substance Use, and four Falmouth residents with relevant professional and/or lived experience related to the impacts of opioid use disorder. The funds received through the litigation will need to be appropriated and our, or I should say, my proposal is going to be to appropriate them to a dedicated line item within the Human Services budget. And I will update the board as we learn more. The next item I want to report out on is the noise complaints we have received with regard to Timber Axe and Bar at twenty-three Town Hall Square. As the board is aware, we've received some concerns from two abudders who have, they're living in very close proximity to the establishment and they are hearing the music late into the night. I did send a letter to the owner's representative. We received a prompt reply back on behalf of Timber and the reply identifies several measures that the proprietors have pledged to take to mitigate the impact of music on the abutting properties. The response we received also mentions live music and that's the first time that this office became aware that there was live music at this location. We then followed up with a second letter notifying Timber that an entertainment license is required if they wish to continue to have live music. The owner has indicated they will be submitting an application for an entertainment license and upon receipt of that application, we will advertise a hearing and notify abudders. Lastly, I want to bring to the board's attention an intermunicipal agreement that the town has had with the neighboring towns of Born, Mashpee, and Sandwich. And, and this relates to the operation of a rail transfer station at Joint Base Cape Cod. So there is a consent agreement that the four towns have with the army, I believe it is, or from the base, the appropriate authorities at the base, I'll say. And that has allowed the four towns to operate this regional transfer station. That intermunicipal agreement expires at the end of this calendar year. So we will be looking to renew that agreement. The town's representative to the, uh, this, to the Joint Base Cape Cod on several matters, including this rail transfer station, is Ray Jack, former Works Director. He is recommending that the town renew the intermunicipal agreement to keep our options open. That operation has changed significantly starting in two thousand and eighteen. It used to be that Falmouth's municipal trash went to that transfer station and was then taken by rail to a facility in Rochester, Massachusetts. But now, as you know, the town's municipal solid waste goes to Born and we're certainly looking to, we have, we have an agreement in place for that to continue and we're not looking to change that in the near future. However, there is a, um, there is still an active solid waste transfer station being operated at the base and that is for private haulers that take waste to that facility and it gets carted off Cape by rail. and it gets carted off Cape by rail. The Town of Bourne has recently indicated they do not wish to continue to participate in that intermunicipal agreement. So there's an attorney that's advising the four-member towns, Attorney Pat Costello, and we are working through that process to figure out the steps needed so that it would become a three-member intermunicipal agreement rather than a four-member intermunicipal agreement. So stay tuned. We will look to bring that back to the board if we can work out those steps with the other two-member towns.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report.
So I'll kick off the Select Board Report. I served at the Senior Center, and that was really fun to work with Jill Bishop and some seniors in Falmouth. And actually, I'm not the best waitress, but it was a lot of fun. It was very, very well done, highly, highly organized, and people seemed to really enjoy it. I also attended the Substance Use Commission and the Commission on Substance Use, and they talked a lot about boxes containing Narcan. And they, at some point, will be coming in front of us to, I think, to look for our support. They'll be going to the Health Board first. We also went to the Water Quality Management Committee this afternoon. Doug was there. Scott Zelinski was there. And what they're looking at in terms of the new DEP regs that are coming down and making sure that we're on top of that and putting together our questions and potential additional options to their two options and coming up with our own. I thought that was really important. Waste Water Superintendent Amy Lowell was there, as was Representative Viera. And then the last... My last thought was I would like to see a Mayflower update on a future agenda. Any other Selectings reports?
Yes, Madam Chair. I could report that on Friday, I attended the Cape and Islands Municipal Leaders Association. Ms. Scott Price was in attendance remotely, and Sam Patterson was also there in person. And a very interesting presentation from gentleman George... I'm sorry, I forgot his last name right now, but he's a housing coordinator for Vail, Colorado. And he personally came up with the concept of deed restrictions on existing properties to maintain them as residential properties. So it doesn't have anything to do with specifically affordable housing. It has to do with making housing available for year-round residency rather than short-term rental or vacant properties, which they have... Seventy percent of the housing stock in their town is basically unoccupied except for seasonally or even on weekends. And so they're very short on supply, and when the season is high, they're very short on help, similar to what we have. And they're boxed in between the mountains, so they don't have much room to move either. Very similar to us. So one thing I found really interesting was when I asked the gentleman at the end of his presentation, who are the people coming forward with the deed restriction? You know, offering to put their deed restrictions on their property? I had preconceived notion it was probably seniors trying to stay in their homes. Surprisingly, half the people coming forward are using the restriction as a down payment on the house that they're buying. So they've targeted between 18% and 21% of the value of the property. Each case is different. And ironically, that's a very similar amount to what would be deposited on a purchase. So it's helping younger folks buy their first home in many instances. And then in other cases, it's helping people with, say, $70,000 to have in the bank to stay in their home. They're not putting any restrictions on the use of the money or the use of the house other than it has to be year-round occupation, you know, occupied house. So I found that to be interesting. Unfortunately, that precluded much discussion on short-term rental because we spent all our time talking about the deed restriction. But I also did have opportunity to meet with staff of Senator Moran this morning on a Zoom call just to kind of update them on what the Cape and Islands Leaders Association had talked about, and also the fact that Falmouth is concerned with short-term rentals and wondering what our options might be. So it's just a sharing of ideas with staff. Senator Moran wasn't able to join us, but she wasn't expected. It's just the staff members. But so we're just throwing ideas out there and brainstorming on ways forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I... Let's see. Also, as Doug mentioned, attended the Cape and Island Leaders Association. And the gentleman who presented also presented at the One Cape Summit this summer. So this was a bit more in detail. And I think it would be imperative that we look into what they've done in Vail. As Doug said, that they're in the mountains. And so he said, "We're pretty much an island the same way that the Cape is an island, and that we can't expand, we're limited on resources." So I think it'd be really interesting to look at what they've done and actually look at how it can be done potentially. I'm following up with the Housing to Protect Cape Cod. During the presentation that I mentioned I went to, or the summit, rather, a few weeks ago, they talked a lot about opportunities that they had for coming into towns and hosting... I forget what they call it, huddles? Yeah, hosting huddles and looking at zonings and that kind of thing. So I've asked them for more detail to be able to present to the board so we can discuss it and vote if we want to pursue any of those options. So I hope to have that by our December 5th meeting. And this was my first year being able to attend the Veterans Day Breakfast. And I hope that was very nice and very well done, and I was glad to have been able to attend even though I couldn't go to the parade afterwards. And tomorrow, I'm going to the wastewater treatment facility. I'm having a tour with Amy Lowell, and I'm really looking forward to that, and I'll report back about that at our next meeting.
Yes.
That's all.
Oh, I did forget one thing. Ms. Scott Price and I went to roll call at 11 o'clock and 12 o'clock at the Falmouth Police Department Friday night. 11:00 p.m., 12:00 p.m. with my pajamas, simply to thank the patrol officers for the work that they do every day and to recognize them, the entire department, that we understand it's been a rough six months for that department. And on behalf of the board, to really thank them for their services. So that was... I got a lot of really positive feedback on that. And then we also did some ride-alongs in the middle of the night, and that was very interesting. So I just wanted to...
Sure that went a long way with the guys and the ladies in the department?
I think it did. I think they were very, very appreciative. I made a couple of points, like I wanted to be on their turf. I didn't necessarily feel like we had to bring them to our turf to recognize them. And certainly, I think the people that would come here to come in front of the board would not be the men that work 11 to 7...
The mid-shift.
Right, or 12 to 8. So I thought it was really important to go over there during those times to honor those two groups of people, just to say that the board really appreciates their work.
Really cool.
That was quite interesting. I did a ride-along a month ago during the day. And even though we only rode along for about 40 minutes,